We ask you to bless this great city of Cape Girardeau, this great state of Missouri, and this great nation of the United States of America. God would just ask you to be here with us, allow your Holy Spirit to oversee us, allow us to lead this city in a great way. We ask all of us in your Son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Althea, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Call to order, Cape Girardeau City Council, this is our April 4th, 2016 meeting. Thank you all for being here. Rule call, please.
Mr. Goss?
Here.
Mr. Gunn?
Mr. Vazari?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Mayor Rediger?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Vazaro?
Here.
Council, next item is to adopt the agenda, if I could have a motion. Moved by zero.
Second.
Seconded by Snyder. Any discussion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have recognitions this evening, and first off, it's very seldom that I have a proclamation and a recognition where I have six, eight, nine, ten of them. But as I have learned through this, that's what it took.
Yes.
To get this done. And we have a whole number of people that are here to represent and be along with Catholic charities as the manager of this project from around the state and outside the state of Missouri. What a great project, and we want to recognize that at this point, so everyone will come forward and join me up here. And we need, first of all, to tell the story, what this is all about, so.
I guess that's my job. Last summer, I guess, we took on a project that was probably bigger than any one of us could even dream about doing. It came to our attention through one of our caseworkers who works with individuals with developmental disabilities. Very rundown property, older couple, lot of disabilities, the kind of people that just screamed for help. Unfortunately, the house screamed louder, and the house screamed often, and Mr. Williams with the city screamed the most. So, we worked, we decided to look at the project, we really didn't want to do it. It was going to be a long project. There's a saying in disaster work, whenever you work with people who are in a lot of need, to follow the four Cs, the four Cs, and those four Cs are communicate, coordinate, cooperate, and collaborate. And that's exactly what it took to get this project to its completion. We don't do this. We do this. We do this as communities, we do this as faith-based individuals, we do this as organizations and companies within our community to be able to help people and help people in need. And through the great cooperation that we get with the city of Cape Girardeau, we're able to do great things. And I think this has helped foster a wonderful relationship that we can see going on further and further. Now, we have two people who are looking at having definitely not only to relocate, but even potential homelessness in a stable, safe environment to where now we can get the services to come in and help them and help them maintain their home in adequate manner. And that's what doing God's work is about for us. I know it's about for these people up here, and I think it's about for most of our community in Cape.
Very good, that's quite a story, and I noticed through the presentation, the word "we" several times, "we." Ays couldn't do this project, wees did that.
That's absolutely right.
Wees did this project. So, as part of the wees, I'd like everyone, take a minute, introduce yourselves, and what you, who you represented coming to this project. Let's start on this end.
My name's John Hockey, I represent Dismat-Jesuit High School up in St. Louis.
Tony Harper, I represent Window World.
Mike Harper, Window World.
Gary Schisler, Advanced Pest Control.
Jerry Seemers, Chairman of the Mission Team for Centenary United Methodist Church.
Patrick Davidson, First United Methodist Church of Jefferson City.
Dave Harrison, First United Methodist Church in Jefferson City.
Bill Howard, Jefferson City, First Methodist Church.
Don Whitehead, First United Methodist Church, Jefferson City.
Jim Asselton, First United Methodist Church, Jefferson City.
Bill Bond, Chief of Missouri Act and Leadership Program.
Bill Moses, Catholic Charities Southern Missouri Cape Office.
Kyle Shot, Catholic Charities.
Very good. Okay, now that having been said, I would like to go through and read the proclamation. Whereas due to health problems and various poverty issues, James King and Lilian Martin's home on Gibbene Street in Cape Girardeau had fallen into significant disrepair. Understood. Due to non-compliance with minimum property standards, the couple was forced to move out last year, doubling up with relatives. Lilian is a client of Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri Developmental Disability Program. And whereas Ronnie Phillips, Lilian's support coordinator at Catholic Charity, brought the conditions of the home to the attention of Billy Moses, Catholic Charity's construction manager. And whereas, due to the size of the project, and with the encouragement of Steve Williams, Housing Assistance Coordinator with City of Cape Girardeau, a team of volunteers, churches, businesses, and nonprofit organizations were sent. Whereas, under the leadership of Billy Moses, Catholic Charity's Construction Manager and Construction Team, the group worked together to make the house safe and habitable once again. The entire home was refurbished top to bottom and front to back. Whereas Centenary Methodist Church, their project coordinator Jerry Seemers donated significant time and money into this project. Window World installed new windows and siding. East Missouri Action Agency provided insulation and appliances. Funding was provided by Missouri Housing Trust Fund, Senior Citizens Service Fund of Cape Girardeau, Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri, Centenary Methodist Church, and the First Methodist Church of Jefferson City. Volunteers for the project included Centenary Methodist Church, Cape Girardeau, Dismat-Jesuit High School, St. Louis, First Methodist Church, Jefferson City, Mission Alternative Baric, University of Missouri Columbia, and Procter &amp; Gamble. Procter &amp; Gamble, exact back, back here. Businesses and organizations have donated material and labor including Forsyth Counseling, Advanced Pest Control, Drury Southwest, East Missouri Action Agency, Habitat for Humanity, LTRC Committee of Wayne County, Graham Power Service, and Window World. And whereas many organizations donate their time, energy, and resources to make a difference in our community and enhance both the appearance and character of the entire neighborhood, and it is this type of unquestioned giving and unprompted generosity that sets our community apart from others. Whereas what began nearly ten months ago with a dilapidated house and little hope, transpired into a new beginning for two Cape Girardeau individuals. James King and Lilian Martin received the keys to their refurbished home and moved in on Monday, March 14th, 2016. Therefore, be resolved, I, Mayor Rediger, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby recognize Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri and all that they did to make this project a success this fourth day of April, 2016. So, thank you and congratulations. You have a word to listen?
I'm speechless.
I think I heard "never again."
I love to repeat these infamous words, but I get in trouble. That is until the next time.
That is until the next time.
Stay by my side where these all go.
Do, Eric, Mr. Nerdus.
Okay.
And the representative from Jefferson City.
Which one, right here?
And then, Advanced Pest Control.
Yep.
And then Window World.
Window World.
And then the Smith.
Smith?
East Missouri Action Agency.
Is Procter &amp; Gamble up here?
Yeah. Trying to hide, but.
Thought you were just watching.
Just happened to be.
I'm not saying John Boss and Matt Graham, I'm not on the same. Thank you all for everything you did for this project. It's great.
Can we try to squeeze you all in? If I could, just if we could figure with you for one moment, could we have our Jefferson City friends please stand up here in the center of the room? Mayor Rediger, would you please stand right here, everybody else filed in around him? Plenty of whole group. Squeeze you all in here. There we go. Don't be shy, get in there.
That's me in here.
There we go, and if everybody can look at me real quick, we've got a couple cameras in the room, and we'll get everybody in. Over here, big smiles, thank you. Okay, who's up next? I think we have some from Jefferson City, right, or the grand one? We can email more of these too.
Great story, Mark, also in the paper. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it, man. And we'll see you again.
Billy, how are you?
I just heard the name, and I looked up, and I thought, an old neighbor.
Hey, I said.
By my counsel, if you didn't see it back earlier, the board back there, the fours and ambers, amazing. Okay, as I said during the study session, that election is tomorrow, and we're going to talk about that, and that's going to be a good way to vote. But that also means a changing of the guard, and we have two council that are termed, termed at this point, and this is their last official council meeting. So, Mark Landzati, if you would come down, and Loretta Snyder, if you would come down, and the rest of council, if you'll come down and decide. I guess blanked by just one on each side, I guess, this guy. Been a real honor to serve my term of six years to this point with both Mark and Loretta. And I've got a cheat sheet here that couldn't go on one page. This is Mark Landzati. I'll say to you, Mark, council member for eight years, 2008 to 16, mayor pro temp, 14 to 16, worked with two mayors, Knutson and Rediger. I'm not going to read all of this, but I highlighted some that meant a lot. Casino funding policy committee, Member John. City manager executive search and hiring committee, a very important function, how we got our city manager Scott Meyer, and that's why a lot of these things have happened since then. Scott, Mark. Cape area magnet, 2009 to present, serving on that with you, you were chairman in 2010. St. Vincent Parish and School. And then some of the accomplishments, and again, I'll read them all, but key ones, purchase of the university farm for a business park, creation of the Cape County Transit Authority, approval of the parks and rec stormwater sales, the fire sales tax, the transportation sales tax, and funding proposal for the new wastewater treatment facility, all so important to our, to the growth of our city. Adoption of a new city comprehensive plan and downtown strategic plan, creation of the city's first residential historic site, purchase of a new public works facility, establish the Town Plaza CID and also the downtown Cape Girardeau CID, recently established a downtown TIF, TAF, establish landlord licensing program, convention center redevelopment, one of the keys we didn't think we were going to get to happen, that's now, the dirt's being turned. Automated trash, single stream recycling onboard, automatic leave pickup onboard, designated bicycle lines, trail enhancements, one thing didn't go there, that was your passion, and that's sidewalks. Yep, sidewalks. New police station and fire station funded, not just, we got them there, they're funded. A plethora of new businesses and new jobs in the area. Interstate 55, East Main, LaSalle Exchange, which led to the business park, the River Campus Project, Mississippi River Overlook from the old river bridge, Cape's Blige, Shawnee Park Center, Cape Park Disc Golf Course, Broadway Corridor improvements, wastewater treatment facility from there, emergency operations center, Fire Station Three, wasn't there, broke ground on the new indoor sports complex, and broke ground on the transfer station. And it goes on and on. So, Mark, you've been a real key and a real cog in our council over the last eight years, and been a great resource to me personally over the last six years. So, to you, from the city of Cape Girardeau and all its citizens, an appreciation and recognition for your years of commitment and service to the city of Cape Girardeau to Mark Landzati, city council member 2008 to 16, mayor pro temp, 14 to 16. Mark, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. [applause]
You have a few words. Oh, you're still working on your, you have some comments. Now, all of the things that I read from Mark, Loretta was there. And before.
I wrote her coat tail.
And before. Loretta has been such an anchor on our city council and our city for so many years, it's hard to just recognize her for city council, because she has been so active throughout our community for so many years, even pre-city council. I would venture to say that no one, no one councilman, I'd even go as far to say, mayors, have attended as many meetings and represented our city at meetings and functions in the city and outside the city. We'll talk about that as I go through here a little bit, and Loretta Snyder. She's everywhere. I know she's everywhere because she's always there when I'm there, and I know I'm not at everything, but she's always there, and she's always been there, very dedicated, and Loretta, we appreciate all those, all those extra times, the extra service that you've given. So, going through without repeating everything, Mark, I'm sorry, but her pages are just a little longer.
I absolutely would expect they would be three times or more.
Okay. City council member, 1981 to 1986, first woman to serve on city council. City council member, 2005 to 2016, mayor pro temp, 2010, 2012. Adds up to over 16 years of service, right up here. Well, it wasn't all up here, was it? It was back in the back room.
Yeah, backwards, Gail's office.
Yeah, there you go. So.
So, we're clear that's where the public meeting was.
The public meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Represented by council here. Certified professional community, certified municipal official from the Missouri Municipal League, 2013, and I would say, how many Missouri Municipal League annual meetings did you go to?
Almost all of them.
I would say every, I wouldn't be far wrong if I said every one. Every one.
I might have missed one.
Very dedicated to the Missouri Municipal League. Leadership Cape alumni, Historical Association, Cape Girardeau, Southeast Missouri Council of the Arts, St. Francis, Old St. Vincent's Church Restoration, Senior Tax Board, and of course, an election judge. City boards, Keep America Beautiful, that we've represented tonight again, you helped regenerate that, and we appreciate that so much. Keep Cape Beautiful Beautification Committee, Park Development Foundation, Convention and Business Bureau Advisory Ex officio, city manager search committee, again, bicentennial committee, Vision 2000, Vision 2020.
Twenty.
Yep, Vision 2000, Vision 2020. And again, during, through here, accomplishments, without doing a lot of repeating, but approved the city count one of the key items. Voters approved the city council with council manager form of government in 1981, a real key to our, to our city, a real key to our city. Downtown special business district established in 1983, voters approved the ward system in 1992, voters adopted term limits in 1996. I'll go down to completion of a mural and a downtown flood wall in partnership with the Corps of Engineers for improvements of the flood wall protection system, so important. A lot of these are duplicates of Mark, because she was, she was there all the time. Keep Cape Beautiful efforts, construction, Show Me Center, that's before your time, Mark. Show Me Center, West Park Mall. I might not have been here if we didn't have West Park Mall. That's true. Cape's Blige, Shawnee Park Center, the Disc Golf Course, Broadway Corridor improvements. And again, very important, broke ground on the indoor sports complex and on the city I would say, evolution of city government from, from pro time on has been a real key to Loretta's, and Loretta's behalf. Of course, Keep Cape Beautiful, what she's meant to parks over the years, what she's meant to CBD over the years, what she's meant to tourism over the years. Loretta, could go on and on, and Loretta and Mark, I both have clean copies of this for you to take home and peruse. But I will say to you, Loretta, from the city of Cape Girardeau and all its citizens, in appreciation and recognition for your years of commitment and service in the city of Cape Girardeau, to Loretta Snyder, city council member, 2005 to 2016, and 1981 to 1986, and mayor pro temp, 2010 to 2012. Congratulations.
Thank you for your years.
Mark has a speech, but I don't.
We're going to let you go first.
I consider myself a concerned, passionate citizen, and one of my goals will be to develop more citizens of that nature, so I think I've gained respect for people in Cape Girardeau, and I'm proud of that.
Absolutely.
And it's been a labor of love.
Very good. Thank you, thank you for all your years of service. Okay, Mark.
Is it my turn?
It's your turn.
Should we use the mic so they can hear? Yeah. Does that work better for you, Nicolet? Does Loretta want to say, do you want to talk to the folks at home? Can you hear Loretta? What you said, or no? No? All right. I only have about 20 pages. No, actually, I have a cheat sheet right here.
If you're going to get to the mic, get to the mic.
I am at the mic. I thought back, and then, of course, at break, you told me we had to come up with a few words, so. What should I talk about when I kind of came up here? I think about a lot of funny things. Gail and I, we get a lot to laugh at in our swearing-in, if you may recall, which probably didn't look very good at the first day of the job for me, but nonetheless, we made it.
That's all right.
Anyhow, I thought about what should we project as to the eight years of doing this? And the one thing that I wrote down first in my notes is, to the future councils that are going to sit up here, and for those of you who are here, and those of you who are going to take on, and you're going to have a responsibility to mentor these new council members, and that's very, very important. The thing I wrote down was, even though you think so, you're probably not 100% right in your ideas. I've certainly been guilty of that in my own pursuits up here, but over time, I realized that while some of those ideas may have been good, there certainly were from, ideas that come from other folks, and remember that the way that, that things get done in this group and in this body is really through compromise and working together. Before most of you got on the council, with the exception of Loretta, there were some contentious times on council. We have seen and heard the stories of that, and I don't think that serving in that environment would be rewarding for the citizens and beneficial for the citizens. So, I would implore the council moving forward to really look for those areas of common ground and to seek those levels of compromise so that you don't have that division. At the end of the day, it's not about individual victories or individual pursuits, it is about representing yourself in a manner that represents the citizens collectively as a whole at their best. And if it's fun, it's fun to come here, if you enjoy the people you sit next to, if you lose that one singular thing, it will become a drudgery, and quality people will not sign up, and quality representation will not occur in this city. And we have benefitted, benefited from quality representation before us. I hope that we did a good job while we served. We had a successful list of accomplishments, Loretta, that you and I both shared, and it was awesome. Awesome for our city, it's one of the things that we can be most proud about, are those things that occur. But thinking about, there's a picture floating around somewhere up here, when I had a little more hair, and I didn't need readers, of Jake Knutson and I sitting there at the opening of the South Street. And that's on my list, and that's on your list. But I will tell you that I went there and got a picture taken on the South Street, that the foundation for that success occurred long before I joined the council. And remember that what you're doing here today is laying the foundation for those future successes. If the service turns to infighting, if the service turns to selfishness, those foundations for future successes won't be there, and I think those are very important. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
[applause] I heard you. I love it.
Good, I was going to run it by you, but I only had a couple minutes.
[inaudible]
Great stuff. It's great. City council communications, and we talk about Keep Cape Beautiful, and this is April again, and there's so much going on. We honored Business of the Month, Montgomery Bank, earlier in our study session. There's other, a lot of other things going on this month, spearheaded by our Parks Department. I'd like to ask Julia Spearheaded by our Parks Department, I'd like to ask Julia Thompson if you'd come forward and talk about the month of April as it pertains to parks, what's going on, Keep Cape Beautiful, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, after a beautiful weekend, and after a gorgeous day today, it's first of all, my pleasure to thank Councilwoman Bobby, and Councilwoman Snyder, who I've had the pleasure to work with. So, thank you so much for your support of all endeavors that the city takes on, especially Parks and Parks. I'll look forward to working with you on that in the future. But, the exciting thing is, is that April is actually turning into a Keep Cape Beautiful Month. That's what our committee is working hard to try to bring awareness and education to our citizens and visitors, that the number one thing I hear most of all is, Cape Girardeau is a beautiful community, it's absolutely gorgeous. And then the number one thing that I hear from our Keep Cape Beautiful committee is, how can we get rid of all this litter? What can we do to help visit some people recognize that our city is so worth, you know, keeping beautiful and cleaning up? So, we're highlighting activities that we started last Friday, which was Missouri Arbor Day. We planted ten trees in partnership with our Tree Board and the University Board of Cultural Club down at Arena Park in our Quad Complex. And people come on, they're like, what are you doing? We're planting trees and making the area look beautiful. So all throughout the month of April, citizens and our board members will be doing beautification projects. It culminates with our Friends of Parks Day, which is our traditional, I think we must be in year twenty-something of that event. But it's an event on April 24th, that's a Saturday, and you can join us at any park, register at Capitol Hock. And for a couple of hours in the morning, you can do tree plantings, flower plantings, cleanup, all over the city, not just in parks, but downtown, on Broadway, as there mentioned earlier, we have our art and sculpture opening on April 15th. So we'll be working on Broadway, doing all of the landscape media, it's looking really nice for that. So, the whole month of April is cause for celebration. April 22nd is Earth Day. We usually celebrate that by acknowledging that. The Missouri Department of Conservation will be doing river cleanups all this month, actually, starting March 15th through April, river cleanup and the Cape La Croye Stream cleanup. So there's much going on. We hope that residents will contact our department, or just come that day on the 23rd, and we'll find some break. Not too hard work for you, and hopefully the weather will be just as nice as it was this past week.
Okay, thank you very much. And also, you know, it, it is time for individual homeowners and neighbors and neighborhoods to look to spring and spruce up and clean up and, and begin a new year and start a new season, so encourage all our citizens to join in in April in the Keep Cape Beautiful program. A few other quick announcements from me. Privileged to attend the Roger W. Fields Memorial Highway dedication last week out at the Conservation Center. I will tell you that I wrote down three words about that, that well-attended session. It included stories, emotion, and tribute, and it was, it was a great, it was a great day to celebrate the life of Roger Fields and a tribute to him on the naming of a section of North Kings Highway, the Roger W. Fields Memorial Highway. Julia mentioned the, Friday, April 15th at six o'clock, corner of Broadway and Fountain, the third public art outdoor exhibition, that's our sculptures. Encourage everybody to be there and participate. I will highlight council, our meeting, our special meeting on Friday, the Merriweather naming, the Juden naming of the Merriweather Station at 3:30, and our special council meeting at four. Saturday morning, 10 o'clock, a Special Olympics session at the Show Me Center in the, in the REC Center. And I would encourage, lastly, everybody to get out and vote tomorrow. We have two very important items on the agenda for, for tomorrow, so I'll encourage everybody to vote, and I think, Wayne, you're gonna say something about that also.
Go ahead. You're a minute.
We thought we'd tag-team.
Good.
Since it's such a big issue, and it probably needs, needs, whoa. Needs a little, a little bit brought to its attention. Tomorrow on the ballot will be two very important issues that will, could affect our city for a long, long time. We talked about, and when I just spoke there, about foundations. Foundations of this city that are in, at risk tomorrow are those businesses which would suffer, I, I believe, and they believe, from a no vote of not supporting. And those are businesses that, that sell automobiles, that sell boats, that sell motorcycles, and I guess if we have an airplane dealer, that would apply too. But for the most part, those automobile dealers are really at a crossroads tomorrow, and a yes vote in support of this use tax issue as it pertains to the motor vehicle for continuation of, so that is not a new tax, for a continuation of the motor vehicle sales tax is imperative for those thousands of people that are employed either indirectly and indirectly with the dealerships on Seamer's Drive, Kings Highway, and sprinkled throughout the rest of the city. And I know that they are actively supporting this, they are actively encouraging their employees, and they are actively educating the public in the importance of this. If it didn't take long, when the law had a wrinkle in it, and there was a time period when you can buy a car out of state, that dealerships from out of state became predatory in the border cities of this state of Missouri, which really is almost all of them by geography. And that is the importance that's at issue here tomorrow, and I, I hope through the campaigns that have been out there, that people have obtained the information, that they can make an informed decision on that. If they don't, there is certainly information available on the city's website, and there are certainly a number of people in the community that have educated themselves on this because they can be passionate about its support and its importance associated with supporting this. There are two votes tomorrow, though. One is a continuation of the motor vehicle sales tax. The second is a support for purchases out of state. And what a lot of folks have asked me in our conversations and the educational campaigns is, this is not us trying to tax the internet. That is way above our pay grade, folks. Right now, currently in the state of Missouri, there is a use tax in effect. That use tax applies to state and now county portions to purchases made out of state. It comes up, this vote of yes is only to impose, or to implement the local increment, which is 2.75 percent. It comes up on material purchases, projects like concrete, steel. There right now is a motivation, if I am building a project in this, in the city of Cape Girardeau or in the state of Missouri, there is a motivation for me to go to Illinois and try to buy that, those equipment, that material, tax-free, and bring it back so I can save those funds. That is impacting our ability to compete. It, it is why this second portion of the tax has the support of the materials providers in the community. Those folks who see the impacts that can occur, they have all spoke to me, they have all said, if this happens, we're gonna have to relocate and put an office in Illinois for us to continue to compete. It is a system, it is a question of parity, it is a system of level playing field and fairness. And it is one that I think if, if a citizen, to educate them on, I hope that they would come to the conclusion to support both components of. The benefit of supporting that is twofold. There is a public safety portion that Mr. Councilman Bowen's gonna speak to. The second portion is that we know that we will have a continued funding stream in effect, which will allow us to make some improvements to Shawnee Sports Complex, which is in excess of twenty-some-odd years of age, and it is tired. It is an attempt to renovate Shawnee Sports Complex and bring it up to a top-notch, destination-worthy baseball facility and sports facility. And today, in age of youth sports, Julie has preached to us, and we have all bought it. We all believe and all recognize how important an economic driver that is for our community, and we look forward, I hope, the next council will have the opportunity to look forward to marshaling the implementation of what is going to be a great and exciting renovation and rebirth of the Shawnee Sports Complex from a successful passage of the use tax.
Okay, thank you. Wayne?
I appreciate and agree with the comments Councilman Lanzotti made, and let me add the, the final component that you mentioned, which is the, the essential funding capacities we'll add on, on the side of public safety. We've known for a long time, we've needed to add more police officers in the city of Cape Girardeau. We've agreed for some time, the citizens indicated their support for that as well through polling and surveys and elections. And so I think this is, gives an incredible opportunity to add seven new police officers and permanently fund three grant-funded officers, which will put us where we need to be in terms of our overall ability to protect the citizens of Cape Girardeau. We've seen unfortunately tragic news the last week or so, which is, I think, point out even more why we need to have more patrol officers on the street. So I hope the citizens of Cape Girardeau will join me in voting yes tomorrow on both of these measures to, to make our city more safe and to give the support to the police department that they need so that they can help us in that endeavor.
Thank you, Councilman Bowen and Lanzotti, for those comments.
And I had one more.
Go ahead.
Forty-eight years and 173 miles ago from here, Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated at the Lorraine Hotel. And I just want us, as we think about everything that we do going forward, including the way that we vote and act in our community, to remember that we're all on the road together, that in some ways ended that night, but also started that night. So, April 4th should always be an important date for us, and I wanted to not go without mentioning tonight.
Thank you very much. Any other council? Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Okay, Eric, or, not Eric, Greg. Will you take us through the consent agenda?
Bill 1654, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a corrected specialty warranty deed from the city of Cape Girardeau to BNSF Railroad Company for the property located along the railroad track adjacent to property of 415 North Main Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 1654, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a corrected specialty warranty deed from the city of Cape Girardeau to BNSF Railway Company for the property located along the railroad track adjacent to property of 415 North Main Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 1655, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing stop signs at multiple locations. Bill 1655, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26-121 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing stop signs at multiple locations. Bill 1656, an ordinance accepting temporary construction easements from various property owners from the Independence Gordonville Roundabout Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 1656, an ordinance accepting temporary construction easement from various property owners from the Independence Gordonville Roundabout Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 1658, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning property located at 2930 Hawthorne Road in the city of Cape Girardeau and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R1 to PD, improving the preliminary development plan for proposed residential community. Bill 1658, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of the property located at 2930 Hawthorne Road in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R1 to PD, improving the preliminary development plan for proposed residential community. Bill 1659, an ordinance screwing the record plat of Red Hawk Commons Phase Two. Bill 1659, an ordinance screwing the record plat of Red Hawk Commons Phase Two. Bill 1662, resolution in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri stating intent to support passage of federal legislation to ensure maintenance of the Mississippi River and Tripletarys Project and passage of the comprehensive flood control and navigation project for the upper Mississippi River base. Bill 1665, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a record service agreement with Burling's, Inc. Bill 1666, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lockout service agreement with Burling's, Inc. Bill 1667, a resolution authorizing, announcing selection of the proposal from the Pennzoil Construction Team to design and build its new fire station four, selecting the first alternate, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a design-build agreement and present it to the city council for approval. Bill 1672, resolution announcing the selection of the proposal from the Keefe and O'Brothers Team for the police station jail municipal court project, selecting the first alternate, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a design-build agreement and present it to the city council for approval.
Council, you have heard the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? So move, to move Azura. Second?
Second.
Second by, Bowen, any discussion? Items 10 and 11 are very significant in moving us forward in the design-build stage for both the police station and fire station, a, a, a big step forward, council, and all our citizens, this evening, as we move forward on those two very important projects. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye? Those opposed? New ordinance, number 13, bill number 16 dash 60, an ordinance vacating Gibney Lane, running north from La Cruz Street right away to Boundary Street right away, and lying east of Sprig Street right away in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read. So moved by Snyder?
Second.
Second by Lanzotti. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Number 14, bill number 16 dash 61, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed from the city of Cape Girardeau to Quinn Strong for the property located at 429 Emerald Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bowen?
Second.
Second by Azura. Any discussion? Very good to get that property off our hands and some funds for it. That property is out there for a considerable length of time.
Turns it back to the neighborhood.
Yep, that's great. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 15, bill number 16 dash 63, an ordinance amending Schedule C of Section 26 dash 121 of the Code of Ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by establishing a stop sign at Spruce Street. First read. So moved by Bowen?
Second.
Second by Azura. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 16 dash, uh, bill number 16 dash 64, an ordinance accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement from Norwald, Inc., for the Touchdown Ridge Estate subdivision, city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read. Motion?
So moved.
By Azura. Is there a second?
Second.
By Lanzotti. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Wow, just about got a eye out of that. Number 17, bill number 16 dash 68, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a supplemental direct loan agreement and promissory note with the Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation for the South Sprig Street Bridge Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
So moved by Bowen?
Second.
And seconded by Snyder. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 18, bill number 16 dash 69, an ordinance appropriating funds from the general and airport funds for certain grant-funded expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016, city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read. So moved by Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Snyder. Any discussion?
Two grants, one is 95% funded, the other's 100% funded.
Yes.
Can't do much better than that.
Keep them coming. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Number 19, bill number 16 dash 70, an ordinance authorizing property acquisition for the South Sprig Street Bridge Restoration Project, city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, first read.
So moved.
So moved by Snyder?
Second.
And seconded by Azura. Any discussion? Long time coming, not there yet, but making progress. Is that right, staff?
One step at a time.
Those in favor, aye? Those opposed? Number 20, bill number 16 dash 71, an ordinance accepting a permanent ingress egress and utility easement from Norwald, Inc., for the LaSalle Tank Water Main Extension, city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. So moved by Azura?
Second.
Seconded by Lanzotti. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We need to make appointments, two appointments to the Tax Increment Financing Commission and recommending reappointment of Mo Sanford and Jay Knutson.
So moved.
So moved by Bowen?
Second.
Seconded by Lanzotti. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now, I'm gonna say, is there any other business, but I wanna pause after that for just a minute. So is there any other business to come before us? Okay. This has been going on for eight years now, and we wanna make the, the, the last one, meeting for, movement for adjournment to be boisterous. So, Mr. Lanzotti, the floor is yours. You know what to do?
I move adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, moved by Snyder, seconded by Lanzotti for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, and thank you, thank you for your service, both of you.
I need the shelter, and I still haven't come. No, don't give it away.
I didn't make it in yet.
I'll be around.
Oh, I gotcha. I'll be in there before then. No, I need it. Yeah, this Sunday.
Busy month. You'll see me.
I know.
Well, you know, mixed, busy month, it's really, yeah. But I mean, I just, it's, yes.